It's tomorrow.
Almost.
All right, so are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Anyone have any? Do I need to? Do I need to call a motion for that, or is that just for the minutes, right? Right, okay. So, next on the agenda, are there any public comments?
I don't think we have any public here, and Chris just texted me and she's here, so she's.
Okay, great. Then I guess we're moving on to the approval of the January minutes. To have a motion.
I saw.
A second?
All second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, great, the January minutes have been approved. Next on the agenda is the report staff introduction.
Amy is up.
Great.
Hi, I'm Amy, I'm the Adult Services Librarian. So I'm gonna be talking about conversations in libraries and advocacy. I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here, because I did put together a little bit of a PowerPoint. So libraries, as we know, are always in conversation. These conversations take place in a variety of settings, with patrons, with partners, with stakeholders, and the community at large. So I hope the board will join me tonight in a conversation about community learning and advocacy. And please feel free to ask questions along the way if you have any. I was recently engaged with a couple of continuing education opportunities that have really elevated my understanding of community building and how I, as a librarian, can empower individuals to bring their best selves to better their community. So the first training or workshop that I'm gonna quickly go over is the Libraries Transforming Communities series and workshops, it was a facilitation training that's grounded in the need for community engagement to address issues for the betterment of the community. It focuses on serving with patrons rather than leading or following. So that's just kind of a basic grounding of that training. As you see here, like I said, conversations happen a lot in libraries. There's lots of different ways that those happen, storytimes, coffee and conversations, town hall style meetings. And it's all about facilitating learning, exploration, and discussion. So, looking at our community, we have recently seen these types of conversations happening. Most recently, last summer, you may recall the listening posts that happened in our community that was facilitated by several members of the community and the city. And upcoming, we have the Lighthouse in the Library series, which will be town hall style conversations. This is a very specific type of conversation that, in this training, we learned are labeled exploratory conversations, which lead to individuals and communities expanding their knowledge. And expanding that knowledge base requires us to consider point of views from others who we may not be hearing, which inherently leads us to a very core library value, which is inclusion. So our library is extremely invested in inclusion, not just as a foundation core principle of librarianship, but also as a way to foster community connection and encourage civil discourse with the goal of mutual respect and understanding among community members. So jumping into a little bit more about these types of conversations that happen in libraries, you'll see here an image about the different types of conversations that we learned about. So the four types include conflict, transformation, exploratory conversations, collaborative action, and decision making. So, in general, as I was attending the training sessions and working through these online modules, I was also thinking in the back of my brain about library advocacy, because it was the beginning of a new legislative year. We had our state association sending us, you know, reminders about Legislative Day, where we can go in and talk to our legislators about issues that are important to libraries. And I was thinking about community conversations and how important they are. And I was thinking also about how, as a citizen and as a librarian, I've never felt that I entirely fit into a label as advocate. And that's just a personal struggle that I have had. But through this LTC training in conjunction with the PLA Leadership Lab workshops that I had the opportunity to attend, has given me a whole other lens through which to view advocacy and my role in our community. And as advocates within libraries, it just didn't ever really fit into our understanding here in the LTC model of conversation, because advocacy really isn't a facilitated conversation, as these all are. But if done well, exploratory conversations lead to individual and community knowledge expanding, like I said. And that expanding requires us to consider the point of views that are outside our own, as I already mentioned. Sorry, got sidetracked. So those, so leaning into this advocacy didn't quite fit into this model, but it's brewing in the back of my brain. And with that, I started thinking about the Library Bill of Rights. So our library is invested in inclusion as we are and wanting to foster that community connection through these open dialogues and these things like the Lighthouse in the Library conversations. We also need to reflect on libraries as advocates for their communities and patrons to ensure that books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people of the community the library serves. And that is a direct quote from the ALA Office for Intellectual Freedom. So, so to our library boards tasked with advocacy for libraries and their communities. And so in this internal conversation that I'm having in my brain as I'm going through these trainings, I came to the conclusion that advocacy is an ongoing conversation with community and decision makers. And that I hope to kind of delve in here to more about what that conversation looks like. So in the PLA Leadership Lab, we talked about learning conversations and what those look like. Learning conversations, I think, were originally a base model for education. And, but, you know, it crosses bounds, there's not just one area where learning conversations are helpful. So now that I've walked folks through the foundation of why our library is invested in having conversations and including all voices, I'd like to share the other piece of the puzzle here and where I found advocacy fitting into librarianship and for library boards as well. So learning conversations can happen everywhere, it's another type of exploratory dialogue. It's a way to build trusting relationships with other people and organizations and partnerships. So this is where I see advocacy fitting into a conversation or a type of conversation. It requires that the people engaging in the conversation have a frame of mind for learning. And I think that was something I struggled with, and not understanding about advocacy, was that going in and assuming that you're right about everything is not going to create that trusting relationship that is required when you are engaging in advocacy, especially if somebody doesn't agree with you. That's not going to get you anywhere, and I hadn't made that connection, really. And it also requires a term that I learned, which is high advocacy and high inquiry, which essentially means that you, high advocacy meaning you are willing to share the knowledge that you do possess and do that openly and with a nonjudgmental approach to it, or a non-lecturing approach. And high inquiry, again, really wanting to learn about the person who you're engaging in that conversation with so that you can fully understand their point of view. So this is a learning conversation, this is what it requires, and this is also effective advocacy, as I said. So you all as community members and library board members are not only advocates for libraries, but as an extension, an advocate for inclusion as libraries as a core principle. And again, I'm gonna jump back to the freedom of, or the intellectual freedom quote. Again, the key point that libraries, as advocates, must walk alongside patrons. And I believe that that is also a way that, as board members and other, and active citizens, that we can reflect on how we engage in advocacy. So, based on the training video that you were all sent, and I believe you all know that this was also a required staff training, I would ask board members to reflect on the ways that you walk alongside the library and our patrons. So this isn't a call out, but just merely just asking and sharing this kind of inspiration that I had about the views that I held about being a library advocate and what that looked like. So recently, you, there was legislation that was funneled out of our current agenda that some folks might not think had much to do with libraries, some of it, it was obvious because it was in the title. But legislation, both of these pieces that I've highlighted here on the screen was legislation that died in the first funnel, but might appear again as amendments or things that are taken back up in January of 2022. These bills do directly impact library patrons and libraries' abilities to provide programming, access to resources, and basic services to our patrons. And I guess I, again, I just wanted to reiterate, I hadn't ever really thought about advocacy as walking alongside and having continuing conversation rather than just a single moment of or a single conversation. And so I would encourage us all to think as community members how, you know, specific ways that you see library services, programs, or even policies directly and indirectly affecting LGBTQ patrons. And this is mostly to be used as an example of ways to broaden your thinking, it's not just about LGBTQ patrons. It's about all of our patrons and how to make library services accessible. But I thought that this would be a good opening avenue for that. So, yeah, that is all I have. If you all have questions, please feel free to let me know. If anything was unclear, I can try to clarify.
I didn't, I thought, I think one of the questions that we like to ask the staff is if there's anything that we can do as board members to support you in your role at the library. Please let us know if there's something that we can help with.
Yeah, I will certainly do that. I think that just acting as advocates and being being there, like I said, walking alongside patrons and the library is really what we need from from our advocates and from board members and.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Yes, absolutely, I, I think it's very important. And I, I did watch the video training, and so some of it was familiar, I already knew, but then there were some new pieces, so that was good. And then I was gonna ask about the library slash school programming part that was, you know, that didn't go through, what was that entailing more funding for libraries and like after-school programming, or?
No, actually, it was a bill that would have held libraries and schools responsible for minors viewing or engagement with programming that was labeled inappropriate, which is problematic for a lot of reasons in libraries specifically. I can't speak as much to the school side, but, yeah.
I think a good example of that is the recent, some of the libraries who've hosted Drag Queen Storytimes. So it basically would, it could be a fine, or even, I think jail time was even in there.
Wow.
For librarians who hosted that type of thing, if it was deemed in their community to be
Okay.
inappropriate, so it was very interesting.
That is, okay.
Mike, did you have something, or were you just?
I'm just, at what point does the library go beyond mirroring or being reflecting the community? And how much does the library as an institution challenge people to new ideas? Is, at what point does a public institution take and cross over from being a reflection of the community to trying to lead a change in attitude in the community? That's the part, when you start using the term advocacy, that I'm, I'm wondering where where the ethics are to how far you go. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I do. I there is, it's kind of like the, the the question of that we see with, you know, is, is the library, so what I'm hearing is, is the library solely a reflection of, rather than also a window to, is that kind of what you're asking?
No. The
I think you might be frozen. I think Mike's frozen.
Yeah, I think so.
When public institutions try to change attitudes within the community rather than reflect the community, and I think, I think advocacy is possible as long as it's in inquiry, as you identified in one of your slides. I think the role of a public institution is to ask questions, not necessarily to supply a definitive answer for the entire community. And so I think as people, as a library, I think we have to be careful that we are asking questions and we're trying to hear all points of view and we're trying to generate an understanding among all individuals of some of the other people that they might not be aware of in the community. But we have to be careful that we're not the ones identifying what is the correct direction. So, that's my opinion.
Yeah, so I think that, yes, facilitating, like I said, conversation is definitely a place where libraries can lend their support to the community in helping those people to come to, together to, like you said, explore and inquire and have that open dialogue that is necessary. And I think that in the same breath, we have to make sure that we are providing and welcoming an open space, physical space, for our patrons, which can sometimes maybe be a fine line to walk when you are trying to be trying not to actively present or discourage people from attending programs, policies, even being in the library because of a perceived or actual threat, essentially, whether that be not necessarily physical, but you know, being, again, unwelcome, or just not being a place where they can feel safe. And that's every, everybody, that's not saying that there are only, there's only one group of people or two groups of people that don't feel safe. It's, we are trying to create something for everybody to feel safe. Yeah, I can see what you're saying, and I appreciate that, that question and that reminder that we are supposed, we are for everybody. And that sometimes that, we have to keep asking those questions. I think that's important.
During our facilitation training, one of the things that was stated, and it's probably the hardest thing, is as facilitators, we're supposed to be neutral in our facilitation and not taking a stance in one way or the other, which is a hard thing to do sometimes. But I think the diversity audit is a good example that we've been doing. Like Amy said, that it's sort of that reflection of the community, but also a window into the, into the world for people to see different viewpoints. And I think our job is to offer those viewpoints, all the different viewpoints and not, I mean, we're not there to tell people how to think, but to make people understand that that is what our job is, to be inclusive of all.
Great, and I think you, Amy, you stated that, you know, practically on your first slide and basically saying that, you know, the library transforms communities, building, bringing best selves to the community and that you're there to, you know, listen and serve the patrons, you're not there to lead and for people to follow you. You're there to share ideas and, you know, they might be uncomfortable for some people, but for other people, you know, it's a, you know, a moment for them to be like, oh, you're someone else who looks or maybe thinks like me. So, I mean, I think that's important, too. So, yeah. All right, anyone else have any questions for Amy?
All right, awesome, thank you, Amy.
Thank you, you all have a wonderful night.
You too.
All right, so next item is budget? Is that right?
Yep, scroll my screen down here. Computer's not cooperating. All right, so the budget's rounding out like it usually does about this time of year, and we'll see more of that as we get into amendments here in the next few weeks. Currently, sixty-six percent is about average, or almost sixty-six point six. And we are, as you can see, low in the staffing, which is, we've had some transitions in staffing with Janet moved to a new position and then not having anyone in that role for a while and such things. And then our services and commodities is also down from where it was. So you can see that we are sitting well now, and in fact, talking with our new IT guy, I think I told him to look and see if there's computers and things we need, because he's finding some missing links and things that we could use to update, checking on some stuff, especially our laptops and our iPads that have been sitting idle for several months, well, a year now. He's a little worried about battery life and things like that, so we'll be looking at those. And then I just wanted to mention that we have a new financial software that's launching this month. It's called New World ERP, and it's a little bit of a learning curve for all of us, but it's, it's really exciting for me particularly. Everything will be done, like we'll be submitting our bills electronically, which I kind of already do, because I scan most of them and send them to City Hall. But it's really exciting to see this come about, so we'll be able to do all of our own submissions, all of our purchase orders, everything will go through the electronic process now. And I think it'll be helpful, it was supposed to launch today, but I think she said expect an email soon. So we're not quite there, but hopefully in the next week or two, we'll be up and running and learning. And that is, if anyone have any questions about budgeting? Um, and that is it, so I don't have any questions about budgeting, the budget or. Where we are right now. Alright, then I can jump into the rest of my report if you want. Alright, so um, we have some updates, uh, Chris Nelson started on March first as our IT tech art. Um, information technology coordinator, he is working out of um what used to be Janet's office in the library workroom, um. Lots of learning going on right now, he's spending a lot of time um. Just exploring and navigating all the things in the city, he's been on tours of the city and will be going on a second more in-depth. Um, one of those, I think, meeting with different department heads, um, we're super happy and excited to have him in the building. Um, I've tried to tell him to make sure he balances that by. Eventually getting a ticketing system or something so that staff can't just walk into his office and say, hey, help me right now. Um, which is very easy to do, um, he came from the city of Cedar Rapids, he's already um trouble shot. Done some troubleshooting for us on multiple things and may and may, it's a good thing, we're happy to have him here. Um, we have eliminated the technology services position. Um, altogether now at this point and have a news uh position that we're just hiring for right now, we actually just finished interviews today. It's a library services and marketing position, so it'll be very much a frontline staff person working quite a bit at the information desk. And then a piece of that probably six to eight hours a week and maybe more during certain times of the year. Will be spent um supporting Melanie and her marketing, um, that role has gotten bigger and bigger. Um, and a lot, it's all takes a lot of effort on her part, um, so that person will help that and then also. Will um just be there as a an extra body at programs and doing some program work. So lots of hats for this new job and I think it'll be um. It'll develop as we, as a person in whoever we hire is, starts to settle in and figure out what that looks like for them. We have no plans right now at this point to reopen anytime soon except for by still by the appointments, we're um, we're hoping for when the vaccine is prevalent and. Readily available um to all staff that will be able to do that. Um, but we don't have a timeline for when library employees will be vaccinated. Um, if if we're eligible at this point, there is going to be a couple of. Clinics, vaccine clinics in the North Liberty Community Center. Um, at the end of this month on the twenty-fifth and then on April first, so. Library employees and family members who are eligible um under the new regulations. Or expanded eligibility will be able to sign up, have an early opportunity to sign up, so we're excited to see that happening. A few of us have gotten our first shots and that's exciting. And then we always have to remember that some of us might get sick from that shot, so we'll be um getting through those pieces as well. Uh, but I, you know, right now I'd love to have our patrons back, we're all missing them very much. Um, but for the safety of both staff and the public so that we don't end up being all taken down and knocked out. We're gonna maintain status quo, uh, the patrons are starting to schedule a lot more in-person visits now, they're wanting to be in the library. So we're seeing the browsing really fill up during the day, which is exciting for us. Um, and we did expand the hours last month to be open until seven on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Um, so that's helping out with some of those appointments and then Saturdays were open now ten to three, which we did a couple of months ago. Um, and we're seeing all the Saturdays are starting to get busier too, so. Um, we'll continue to look at how we can expand those, it's just a very intense staff, labor-intensive staff staffing to. Cover all the different aspects of what it looks like to have curbside and browsing. But I do think at some point we're gonna probably adopt curbside as a continued model when we're done, when we're back to open too. For those folks who may not um choose to come up in as much or want to pick up curbside. It's pretty, it's kind of nice and it works pretty well, um, we'll probably change the way it looks, it won't be all day long every day because we couldn't. We can't man it, um, but if we can do some like, you know, turnover of like forty-eight hours and we have the items out, I don't know what it'll look like yet, but. Something we're considering, um, our annual contribution letter has gone out and we have been getting a lot of. Donations for both the endowment and the friends, which is very exciting. Um, some also just some unsolicited endowment donations have been coming in all along. Um, but it's really, it's really exciting and gratifying to see the amount of support we're getting through that community or just through that letter drive. So we're excited about that. Uh, I did want to mention, Amy mentioned the lighthouse in the library and I I guess this is not on the agenda, so I'm going off. Or on my report, but I did want to tell you guys, I think you know about it, but Kelly um got a three thousand dollar grant to do some community conversations and. The lighthouse in the library is what is, was born from that, um, so the first community conversation is happening in a month. Um, actually, it might be a month from today, um, and it's going to be on equity and health. Acc- uh access to um health and wellness in our community. And we're pretty excited about it, we have several staff working on that, um, Kelly, me, Melanie, Jennifer and Emily. Are kind of the team coordinating that with Kelly taking the lead role and she'll be the facilitator. Um, I'm gonna act sort of as moderate, she'll be moderator and facilitator, I'm gonna act sort of as a. Second co-moderator to help with questions and fielding those types of things, um, so everybody's got their role and we're really excited to see how that looks. But then I'll go back to the local library split collaboration, I would encourage all of you, if you haven't seen anything about that, we do have some stuff on our social media. Um, Said Jones will be our next um author, last month we had, um. I just blanked on her name, oh my gosh, we had a really cool author visit, but I'm not gonna be able to tell you what it is right this minute, um, that is so funny. Uh, we were just talking about it yesterday, um, but Said Jones is is really gonna be, I think he's gonna be a fantastic author visit. The tickets are free with encouraged donations so that we can keep the program going. Um, and then at some point, I know coming up, I can't remember if it's May or after, we're having Roxanne Gay, which is really exciting as well. Um, there is an option to purchase VIP tickets, which I decided to do this time just for fun, it comes with some. Um, some cheese and wine from Bricks in Iowa City. And then um it it's a pretty good donation for the libraries that are involved in the fundraising. Um, so community engagement series, uh, last time I think they had ninety-some people in there, it was pretty cool. Um. And then the next piece I want to talk about was Pearson School Assessment donated to diversity kits to the library to go into circulation. A local resident reached out to me who works for Pearson and um had. Been the person to take, kind of take the lead to get that launched, um, one of the kits was called Celebration and the other is called Appreciation. And they're geared at helping people celebrate and appreciate diversity. Um, and understand diversity in some place, in some ways, um, so we're pretty excited that they thought of us and wanted to include us in those. Um, I presented on policy writing to the Wild Wisconsin Group. And at the end of January, which was a really fun conference, um, it's been going on for about ten years, I think, and. Um, they had reached out to me way back in October and asked me, it's very well organized, um. And I've had a couple of people reach out to me since then from Wisconsin to ask questions, so that's exciting and fun. Um, and then we participated in a virtual legislative day last week, which was really great. In theory, and I think we had a few legislators, but not very many, none of our legislators managed to get there, but it doesn't surprise me, they're busy. And when we're there in person, we can kind of do a little extra um nudge. By sending notes into them and things, but it's a little harder when they're in committees and meetings, um, so. We didn't have anybody in our group, but we did get to visit a little uh about libraries in our little group from the east side of the state here. Um, and that is all really that's been going on for me and then Jen is, um, we've got all the reports, Jen's report, um, talking about everything that. All the training she's been doing, um. Uh, do you guys have any specific questions about any of the reports? That. You would like to say, uh, talk about, I did want to point out, um, under Melanie's report. She um is still working on the blog and things, um, and then talking about Cloud Library. Um, Cloud Library is a new ebook and audio platform that we've just launched this month too, on March, the week of March first, we launched and. Um, we're very excited to have a second ebook platform, so if you haven't downloaded the app, you can put it on your phone or your device and. Check out the content, we don't have a heck of a lot of material in there yet, but fortunately, part of the deal Cloud Library is that we get to share. Um, any other libraries in the state who have Cloud Libraries, share their content with us. So we have a fairly good collection just based on that and we'll continue to, as we have funds to grow that, our little local collection. So she talked about that and then it also comes with a mobile app, people can actually check out their library materials from their phone. So they don't act even have to go to self-check, they can just scan them right onto their phone, um, it works really slick. I did it last, or last week as a test thing when we started the launch. Um, and then she talks about the newsletter, um, she just basically shared, she said, I don't want to keep harping on it, but. It's great if they can help advocate and sign up for, if they're on social media, sign up for social media, um. Or or follow all of our our accounts and then share things, that's a great advocacy role for you guys, so I just wanted to point that out. Um, another thing Amy did not tell you that she has, I wanted to sing her praises a little bit, is that she is working on um. Helping with utility, the utility applications for people who need assistance with utilities. And has been doing a really fantastic job with that, she's coordinating hopefully some language ambassadors to come in and help people who may. Um, not have English as a first language, um, to be able to do that, rent and utility assistance, um. And working really hard on it, she's had several people reach out to her, so. Um, these are the things that we can start doing, you know, one-on-one meetings, we've. Done that where we just put the shield between, on the table between us and. They can actually hold up their device and we can help them that way, I don't know what she has planned to do for this one, but she's, I know she's working on it and I'm. I think it's really fantastic. So, those are just a few things that I wanted to point out, um, we have a lot going on, they are working on summer programming, the. Summer programming across the board from between us, the communications and rec is gonna be really great. Um, we're pretty excited about what's coming. And that is all I have. So we can move on if you like. I don't, I think next on the agenda is the mission. I'm planning for results, right Laura? You're muted.
Sorry, I meant planning for results and the mission statement, that's what I have for the policy review.
Yep, and we um obviously planning for results is up this year. Um, for renewal, I did not include it in here just because there hasn't been a heck of a lot to include based on. The way the last year has gone, um, what I would do, would like to talk about is the um updating that. This year, um, the plan is, and I'm hoping it will happen this fall, although fall seems like it's gonna come faster than I'm ready for it. Um, is to work on the same platform that planning for results, but to rework it based on a model that came out of. Um, the Bettendorf Library, their director there is really great, um, she's worked in a lot of different sized libraries and she. And I talked about this because I thought about trying to hire someone to come in, a consultant to do planning with us. And she said, having worked with both models, um, the planning for results and through the state library and through having a. Hired consultant, which costs a lot of money, um, she much preferred planning for results. Uh, I trust her professional judgment a lot, I um have not posed this to her, but my hope is that I can talk her into coming. And working with us on this because she used planning for results and then created sort of her own model at Bettendorf. To redo their their um strategic plan, so I'm hoping to get, at least get her ear, but maybe get her actually here. Um, which is another reason why I hope it's in the fall, but depending on where we are, um, whether it's safe for her to come and do that or not. We'll see, I don't think that the world will fall apart if we don't have the strategic plan done at the end of the year, but I I would like to have. That model at least started and if we don't have it, if we're not at a place where we can do that work, then I think we'll have the staff at least do some. Um, work with what we have, we've, we've shifted dramatically even in the last, since we wrote that in two thousand seventeen. It's amazing how, but I mean, I can't imagine planning ten years out anymore because things change so rapidly, um. So, that is where we are with planning for results, um, the mission statement I did include. The one thing that we're really wanting to do is look at that mission statement is to look at, um. Including the word learning or that that whole piece there, um, and then I I loved what Amy said about walking all inside the patrons. Um, I wrote that down actually as not necessarily how we're gonna write the mission, but just something to keep bear in mind as we're doing that mission. Um, so and so then the second piece would be that. Equity, inclusion and diversity and how do we, can we incorporate that into our mission? Um, so those are the two things that we'd like to do with it. Um, I don't know when we'll next have it, the last time we did it, we had Marcia, who used to be on the board. Come in and do some work with us to come up with the mission that we have right now, um, I think it's still a solid mission statement. Um, I'd just like to see a few extra pieces added in, so I think what we'll do is just tweak what we have. Um, if any one of you is interested in being a part of that. Once we figure out how we're gonna do that, I would love to have, I welcome you guys to join us. I I don't know if we'll use, we used an online um model for doing that last mission and it really was helpful. Um, so we may go back to that again and just, and just start fresh with this, with our current mission. Kind of in the, in the back, back of our minds as we go through that process again. So, any questions on that?
Nope, just keep us posted, I'll definitely be willing to help how I can.
Great. So that is all I have and then as always I included our uh. My update that I give to the city council, and I don't know if any of you saw it, but um, just. If you saw the leader this week or the No Joke Co, um, they did call us about the Dr. Seuss, um. Deal, which I didn't think was as big a deal as a front page news story, but great. Because if it gives us publicity, we'll, we'll take it. Um, and and you know, I think the bottom line is, we're here again to represent all different views and opinions and. Um, I understand the idea of classics, um, but what we maybe thought was classic back in the day might not be classic to our kids today. So, um, while we will keep. Um, the one title that we have in the collection for now, I, it's probably not gonna last forever and in fact, it was checked out when Andrew went to look for it. After we got that email, so someone was reading it for what, whatever reason they wanted it, but. So that was the only other piece that was new since I wrote this. Any questions or comments?
No, I don't think so, um. Is this where I? Call a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, any? Anyone second that motion?
Alright guys, we'll see you next month.